Bring to order the Larnesburg Board of Works meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call, please.
President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we got City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
And we got Tony Abbott as the president tonight.
Alrighty. Um, roll call, everybody's here, announce them. Have any announcements from any members?
I have none.
None, sir.
Moving on to new business, Greg Cannon.
Can I get approval of the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped approval of the minutes to the previous meeting.
So moved.
Got it first by Tommy, second?
Second.
Second by Brett, on favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Alright, now we'll go on to new business. Greg Cannon, please. K nine contract.
How you doing, guys? I don't know what what you want from me necessarily, but I know I presented a contract basically with grassroots K nine. It's been a while since we've done this type of thing. My dog has just turned eleven on the eleventh, on the ninth, sorry, of this month. So we're looking at retiring her, not only her, but another one of our dogs, Kilo, has just turned eleven in September. So we'd like to retire both at the same time, probably once, if approved, once I get back from doing this K nine training with a new dog, basically.
So you'll be retiring two dogs?
Yes, two.
So that'll leave us with one?
Well, it'll be, if if approved, to be a second dog, we have one, we have three on the road right now.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll actually have two on the road once, if approved, you get back. But we're gonna leave.
That was one of my questions, I was always wondering, why do we need three dogs in? Mr. Snyder answered that, said we'll be retiring one, so we'll only have two dogs.
Yeah.
That makes more sense to me.
I actually have, I don't know if you guys want it, but I have stats of all our dogs too, that shows kind of what they've done since their whole career and even last year. If you guys want it at all, to kind of show how busy they've been, because they're, for three dogs, they are actually pretty busy, still, even with three dogs.
That's because we have the best.
That's right.
Wonder if you could, Officer Kane, just kind of walk us through the contract process and like what we're what we're agreeing to, what we're getting, what we're giving them, just being, you know, this is a very specialized contract, so it's different than the ones we usually deal with, it's not something where many are specific to your dogs and your department and your experience.
So I know, yeah. So I know years past, we've usually bought what we call green dogs, so they're basically half-trained, we get them into the department and we kind of train them up the rest of the way. Some of the problems we're seeing with the new breed dogs is, the way we train them, they get a little too wild and they get, start coming back on the handlers. And the county has sent back two dogs recently, I know from that kind of experience. The guy I picked here, his his biggest thing is what's called civil dog, so I can give the least to anybody in this room, as long as they know how to tell them what to do, they'll go do it. And that's how my dog is right now, and I don't really want to have a dog come back and bite me, so I'm trying to prevent not only lawsuits, but be a good dog. And also, everybody I talked to in a lot of trainings I've been to lately, has been either buying dogs from this guy, or that's who they recommend. And really, the the one guy I talked to that actually buys dogs from him, his is actually two thousand dollars more, so this guy's a little cheaper because he breeds his own dogs, trains his own dogs up first. So that's kind of why I went with him, basically, that's why I kind of like this guy. The contract, I think it's fifteen thousand upfront, that's the price of the dog, and then he's got an eight-week training, during the training, you get certified with the dog. So when I leave, I will be totally certified with the dog, and I'll have to come back and get recertified in-house. So each each day, I have another packet here, if you guys want it, it breaks down each day, what you'll be doing, what you'll be certifying with, basically gets me to know the dog and how the dog is, he's gonna have the dog pre-trained when I get there, but I'll be learning how to work the dog, basically. It's gonna be a little different than currently, how we work our dogs a little bit, commands, the dog knowing who I am, type of thing, like that.
How does that price compare to, say, the last couple of dogs we bought, you know?
The price of the dog is, we haven't bought a dog in five years, so I'm sure inflation a little bit, I think our last dog was ten thousand, just for the dog. The training, the other guy I talked to, his training was, is twelve weeks, instead of eight, and it's twelve thousand dollars, so that's about where we're usually at, is twelve weeks, everybody I talked to. So because this guy pre-trains, that's why he can shorten it up and save a little money.
Will there be any, I'm sure there are, just general cost, but what are the costs for the handler and for the dog after this period of?
That's it, he's got a maintenance, basically, if I have any trouble within a period of time, there's a free maintenance thing in there, or if the dog's not working out, he's got a guarantee within a certain amount of months that you give the dog back and he'll give you one for no extra cost. Or if I'm getting through the training four weeks in, and we realize this ain't the dog, he has a guarantee that he will get you a dog that, for no extra cost, basically.
And, Your Honor, if it also pleases the board, we also are putting in for a couple grants to kind of offset that 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 cost, well, it actually cover it in total. We don't know that we have them for sure till after the first of the year, but we're pretty optimistic in in getting at least one of the two.
So you're asking for approval to make the expenditure now, and then the grants might reimburse that, or?
Chronologically, we need thirty percent down, is basically the way it works, right Greg, thirty?
You need the price of the dog right now.
The full price?
Full price of the dog.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna add it in, you know, I, you know, I know there was different discussion, but when it comes to the money part of it, I am gonna ask, so council, if you have any questions, make sure that you ask now, because during the council meeting, when we do the claims, I will be adding, he says he needs fifteen thousand, so the first part, as far as the dog and part of the trainer or whatever, I guess the dog.
Fifteen thousand is the dog, eight thousand is due on December twenty-nine.
So he needs fifteen thousand, basically, I gotta be able to mail a check tomorrow for the fifteen thousand, so I will be asking for that during the council meeting under that, it's not in your packet, okay? So that will be a separate claim to ask for that.
So this is fifteen thousand?
And then the other eight thousand, he told me he didn't need that till December.
December twenty-ninth, I believe it's in that contract, it should say that in there.
Okay, so line item seventy-three ninety is drug enforcement and K nine.
Yes.
We have used nine thousand dollars of that already this year, that's sub six thirty.
Yeah, so.
So we probably use more than that. So are you saying now you're gonna ask for additional appropriations for that as well?
I cannot, I cannot, I, I'm taking.
I was gonna say, because it's not in.
I'm only gonna be able to probably take about eight thousand out of that line, and then I'm gonna have to probably take the rest out of rainy day.
Okay, that's what I, that was my question.
That's, I, I found out a little bit too late on the additional appropriation to get it added to that, or I would have done it that direction, but we, we do have a rainy day, and we got enough in there, so that's, that's what.
Mr. Olet, he he's right on that, Greg came to me the first of the year and said, you know, my dog's getting up there, he give me.
I understand that.
In all honesty, total transparency, this is my first tenure with exchanging a K nine, and I didn't associate the extra cost. I I pretty much know every year, and you know through my track record about what I turn back in, where I'm at, I thought it could be something that we could just manage ourselves, and I didn't take into account the the training portion of it. So I had to go have a conversation with Mark about how we can make that happen, that's why we're here.
Where can we find the money?
I was gonna say, my only question is, is so, not that I'm on the Board of Works, but if this is gonna become a council thing as well.
Will be. Yeah, because I will be asking.
Yeah, my only question would be, is once we get that grant, will that money be able to go back into the rainy day then? Because the only reason why I care is, we've used our rainy day as a slush fund over the years.
If you notice the additional, you notice the additional appropriation, yeah, there's, there's a couple things in there where, yeah, we do not, the funds are not in there that we need anymore.
Right.
It used to have quite a bit of funds, but we've done a lot of projects and different things out of rainy day, and that fund is, it's dwindled down quite a bit.
I, I can't speak for everyone else, but I'm tired of using rainy day, I want that to be there in the future, but as long as those funds will be able to cover that, if we get the grant, then.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll be, yeah, the money will be put back in.
And in hindsight, I should have applied it in capital projects, I I was trying to be frugal with my budget, and, you know, in hindsight, I should have put that in capital projects and planned for that, but in all honesty, I probably would have just planned for the K nine itself. Back in the past, we trained in-house, you know, Officer Jump did all that, he was a master trainer, he's no longer with us, so now Greg has to be certified through that dog, through the trainer. But when he comes back, he's, and Greg's a trainer himself, just that level of training is only offered by the.
So when two oh fours' dog retires, which will be the first of twenty twenty-six?
When Greg comes back and his dog is put into service.
We're gonna leave him on the road, so he can at least have that day shift covered.
Gain a little money monthly, because now you won't be giving that two hundred stipend out for three dogs, you'll only be doing it for two, correct?
Correct.
So that's one thing there.
And if we, any trainings we go, we don't have to pay for the extra person to go to that training and stuff, yeah?
Correct, so there will be a, I don't know if you want to call it an ROI, but in time, that that'll add up, that'll add up over the next four years. And that dog will be in service for what Greg, ten, eleven years?
My dog's eleven now, she's been in service, as of January of twenty-six, she'll be, both Curry and the other dog retiring, total of ten years' service.
So we'll be looking for another dog in the upcoming year?
One's five right now, the other one we have, so, I wouldn't say the next year, but next couple of years, yeah.
So two oh five Luke's is five years old?
He's young.
He's five, yeah.
Expect him to do one more tour, like this will be Greg's second tour, I don't see very many people going past two full lifetime, dog lifetimes, it don't seem like, two's about it.
Do you know by chance how many the other cities around have, as far as dogs?
Aurora has one, they're getting ready to retire, and I don't think, they don't sound like they're gonna get another one, Dillsborough's got one, it doesn't really ever get used, and then the county's got one right now that possibly getting a second one.
Greendale has none?
No.
We do quite a few agency assesses to county and to Greendale and Aurora with with our K nines quite regularly.
Yeah.
Well, that being said, I really don't have no more questions, I'd entertain a motion to move forward, providing we have the proper funding for it.
Did we make this motion for the Board of Works, or do we?
Well, you gotta, approve the contract.
Yeah.
And then, like I said.
So I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
First by Tommy, second?
Second.
Second by Brett, on favor?
Aye.
Move forward.
Here, I'll give you guys these stats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Tommy, I send it to you. Thank you.
Alrighty. That all finished, I'm moving on to old business, is there any old business from the board members?
Have none.
None, sir.
None. And I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
First by Brett, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Tommy, on favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. And now we'll start the Larnesburg Parks and Recreation Committee meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, roll call, please.
Uh, we got Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Member Tommy Rallett.
Present.
Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
Dale Welton.
Here.
And myself.
Alrighty. Everybody's here, announcements?
Any one? Um, the only thing that I'll add, and there's globes over at Newtown Park, one, the park looks really good with everything that the Historical Society's doing over there, so I want to give those folks a big shout-out. But the second thing is, is the globes over there are getting a lot of the black mold on it, I'm gonna reach out to Brad tomorrow, and see if there's anything that we can do to get those cleaned up a little bit, so just wanted to give you guys an update on that.
Any other announcements?
I think Little Hill Park was very busy this weekend, too, they had, what is that, P V football, jamberie or something up there? And that went very well, and they did stay off the grass, so that was good.
Okay.
Yeah, it was very busy.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Lenny, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Tommy, on favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Moving on to new business, and seeing none, anybody else have anything? Move on to old business, and there is nothing there either, so I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Brett, second?
Second.
Second by Dylan, on favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
We got utility board meetings?
Yes, sir. Just for claims.
Okay. Alright, we'll have the Larnesburg Utility Board meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Alright, we got Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tommy Rallett.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
Myself.
Alright, any announcements from board members?
Have none.
Hearing none, we'll move on for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Tommy, second?
Second.
Second by Dylan, on favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Oh, here's another quick one, new business. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Seeing none, we'll move on to review and discussion of claims for board approval.
So moved.
Motion by Dylan.
Make a motion to approve, yep.
Second?
Second.
Second by Lenny, on favor?
Aye.
Things approved, motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Motion by Tommy, second?
Second.
Second by Lenny, on favor?
Aye.
Approved, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Brett, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Tommy, on favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. And here we go. Bring to order the Larnesburg City Council meeting November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, roll call, please.
We got Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Little Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tommy Rallett.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
We got City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
And myself.
Alrighty. Do I have any announcements from anyone?
The only thing that I'll add, and I'll put this in streets, alley and curbs for downtown, there's a sidewalk that has deteriorated pretty badly over by Al Capoco's, there was actually an injury that happened, could we, I'll reach out to Brad and see if we could get him to look at that as well.
You might want to go with Austin.
Austin, okay, Austin be the one to see.
Yeah, go to him if you would, please.
Alrighty, I have one announcement, it's about Thanksgiving week, if your garbage day is Tuesday, it'll be picked up Monday, if your garbage day is Wednesday, it will be picked up Tuesday. There's no recycling the week of Thanksgiving, there is no large pickups on Friday of that week, all offices are closed Wednesday through Friday, November twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. Which will be my birthday the twenty-eighth, in case anybody wants to throw a gift my way. That's the only announcement that I have. Hearing no more, board report, streets, alleys and curbs, downtown, myself, well, apparently we got a problem over at Al Capoco's, is that where they added the sidewalk in for the drain, for that freezer, on the corner?
I don't think so, I'll have to go, I'll have to go double-check, I just heard about it today, so.
Is it on Market Street or Arch Street?
I'll have to ask, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll look and see.
They just redid all them streets over there, I don't know about the sidewalks.
Well, we're still waiting for the curbs to be fixed from last winter.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, don't look like it, but, okay, so, other than that, the streets are being repaired, we're from the new blacktop, where the meters and, not meters, the.
Five boxes and metal.
Boxes and whatever, they're bringing them up level with the street, so that's the work being done now downtown. How about Little Hill, Mr. Lenny?
Everything's good, I do got a person was asking me about the street signs we got up there, they said that when they go, they was looking for a street, and it was dark, and they couldn't see them, I haven't been around, but anybody noticing the reflectors, can you see them on them?
Were our signs ever reflected?
I heard today that they was, but I don't think they are, so I think we need to have the signs with reflectors on it or something.
All I can say to that is, last year, after we did downtown, or up on the hill first, right? I was approached by someone, and they said that, and I'm like, it would have been nice if they knew that beforehand.
Yeah.
And the person worked within the city, because we had just ordered ones for downtown, personally, I haven't went around with a light to flash on them, but I don't know, I don't know if first responders could shed any light on that, you guys having problems, police department, fire department, seeing street signs, or you just know them?
I wouldn't, I know.
You just know them.
Yeah.
I know most of the places they've been, they got a street light right there where they got the, got the poles, but we don't have that.
Your car lights should reflect on them, spraying them up, but not much we can do now, we can't change all of them now, so we'll just put that in your mind for the next time around. Okay, streets, alley and curbs, Mr. Fryman's done, finance, Brett?
Nothing, sir.
Parks and playgrounds, Dylan?
Reported in the parks and playground meeting.
Alrighty, fire, Mr. Olet.
No report, and glad to see that Tremaine here, because his days are numbered.
Alright.
Nice disclaimer.
Then we get charged.
Yeah. We're missing.
Alright, we'll move on to approval of minutes, if everybody's had a chance to look at their minutes, we'll take a motion for approval, or add to them? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Brett, second?
Second.
Second by Dylan, on favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Everybody's got all their reports, committee reports, new business, Mark Fetty, additional appropriation ordinance.
Alright, in your packet, you would notice the additional appropriations, this would be ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five. Once again, I entertain any questions, I know that we, we have quite a few funds there that, and this is something that we do towards the end of the year, every year, just to make sure that we got enough money to budget it to, or appropriated to get through the year. Looking at the general fund, any questions with any of those, anybody have?
I have questions, but I'm going to meet with Chief Snyder on those, so.
Okay, then, of course, we got the P S, that, the riverboat, of course, you'll notice the first one on the riverboat there, so, you know, we had three people retire, so there's a chance that we can keep this third person from retiring, maybe if we don't approve this part of it.
And I don't foresee that happening.
Uh, the DUI, chair grant, once again, that's grants, we get that money back, that's with the police, the parks maintenance, that part of it right there, that that happened because we had a big bill on the Little League fields, and we paid it out of the maintenance line, it was like thirty-six thousand, so that's why that's ten thousand short. MDF, just like Dylan mentioned a little bit earlier, you'll notice that we're funding the rainy day just because it's low in cash, I know that we put some money in there to begin the year too with the budget. And speaking of rainy day, that's the restroom, the pavilion right there, the first additional appropriation that we did, I had the money budgeted, but it got, you'll see that part of that right there got denied by the D L G F, so I have to re-appropriate that, and of course, basically put the money in there with, from the MDF, should allow that to go through, so we can pay for the rest of the pavilion there. And of course, the, or our Oakwood Grant right there, it's on them, that's all grant money, so, you have any questions, I can answer any more that you need.
Mark, what's the total that we have on rainy day, is that that thirty-six?
Uh, by the time we pay, by the time we pay for the pavilion, and the money that hopefully we get appropriated right here, it'd probably be a couple hundred thousand.
Wow.
If that.
It's a shame.
I know that we talked about, you know, like when we sell some buildings and different things like that, I know we've always done that, when we basically got a lot of that, got great money that we loaned out, a lot of that money went into the rainy day, and we had a pretty big surplus, the thing is, we we funded a lot of these projects out of rainy day, which, in my opinion, I don't think in the future we need to fund projects out of rainy day, so.
So when we redevelopment gets the R F P and the E D As for the Davis properties, that money will go into that rainy day?
That will go into rainy day.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and a lot of cities, you know, you're you're allowed to put a certain percent of your general fund into the rainy day every year, we usually don't have to do that, because we've been fortunate in other situations to be able to fund rainy day, it may be something in the future where you, our general fund's done very, very well over the years, so it may be a certain thing that we want to put a certain percent in the rainy day every year.
I just hope our rainy day's a sprinkle. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion to, the additional appropriation ordinance, ten dash twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
A motion by Brett, second?
Second.
Second by Lenny, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion approved. Any other new business? Oh, no, we have the donation committee recommendations, everybody sees those?
Yep.
You need a motion to pass those?
Yep.
Yeah, we do.
Take a motion to pass those?
So moved.
Motion by Tommy, second?
Second.
Second by Brett, on favor?
Aye.
Donations are passed. Moving on to old business, Mr. Welton, Tanner's Creek E L T permit application.
Thank you, Your Honor, so we have in the packets the grading, excavating, and seal and certification permit application, application number two zero two five zero zero seven two, date received June third, twenty twenty-five, for eight hundred A P drive, North Three, Indiana, which is number seven oh two five. Project name Tanner's Creek Plant Fly, I should say Fly Ash, pond closure soil, borrow area number eight, and the applicant is Tanner's Creek Development LLC. I would recommend that we take a final vote on approving or denying that application tonight, and to that end, if there's anyone here from Tanner's Creek Development, if you guys would like to add anything to what's already been discussed, you'd appreciate that at this time.
Something that A T C.
Would you state your name, please?
Eric Lang with Michael's Office.
Alright.
Something that A T C Atlas mentioned that would be worth throwing at you guys was basically a slight modification to what the plan would be, that modification being, instead of taking the entire area that we were originally going to excavate and have all of it hold water, this is a slightly different version, where we still disturb essentially the same area, but rather than have all of it be a area that can capture water, this essentially outputs a four sixty-one elevation, so you can see this kind of narrow area up here, four sixty-one is where this existing channel cuts through. This lowest area would be at four fifty-three, and we've taken all of these elevations, if you look at your old version of the drawing, these elevations are based on soil voidings, and trying to stay a minimum of at least ten feet above a specific strata relative to protecting the aquifer. What we've done with this is at a minimum, everything is an additional two foot higher, so that's more soil between any water that would get trapped there and the aquifer, so we started at five, and then asked for ten, now we're at a minimum of twelve, so we've added an additional twenty, or additional two feet over and above. And then the other thing that Atlas said would probably be a good idea is to take an area and kind of concentrate what water we thought would certainly stay there permanently, which we've done kind of in a central area, and then raise this additionally, if you compare this, this is probably four or five feet higher than our old version, so we're again, we're adding more soil, more protection. This would never get more than four feet deep, even during a pretty extreme rain event, and it's probably gonna sit with a foot or two of water on it, if any water at all, just depending on how the hydraulics work, but this would basically behave as a wetland, this would be kind of that deeper water area, where if you're trying to have fish and everything live in this wetland area, where you've got shallow, you've got this deeper area, where in the winter, those fish kind of migrate to that lower area and survive, and then this would essentially be upland, so you're gonna have water that comes from around the site, from up on Golden Drive, that's gonna trickle through here, this will drain, but it's, it doesn't have anything, any kind of depression, but it is relatively flat, so this would be somewhat of a marshy upland area, much like what the river bottom aged like naturally. So I know Russ from E A G had had some conversations with Dell earlier about this being something that they would, if the city was interested, turn over to them, this is something that could be connected to the walking path and over where the boat ramp is, this has access that could happen through the trail to get over to this area, to be able to get around the wetland in this area, I'm not privy to exactly what those conversations were, that was something that was mentioned. But this is a more these wetlands that you could have here would be something that if you had an area in the city where you were going to disturb wetlands to develop property that is within a foot or two of being in a floodplain, this wetland could be part of that mitigation that IDIM would require. This area is so far underwater that to develop this, you'd have to put ten fifteen foot of fill there. You wouldn't. That doesn't make dollars and sense to try to do any development here. But this wetland that you would create as you disturb wetlands in the same area of the city, IDIM would either require dollars or require mitigation or something like that to offset that disturbed wetland if you did that in other places on the EAG property where you're within a foot or two of a floodplain and developable as compared to here where you're at ten fifteen feet deep, maybe wouldn't, it's not economically feasible to try to develop that fill. But this was just something we wanted to bring up, is something, if that's something that interested the city, this is another way that this could be done. This nets us somewhere near two hundred thousand yards of material. So it doesn't entirely take care of the needs of the wetland or of the landfill to cap it, but it does about almost ninety percent of what we need. So the little bit additional you would need would have to come from offsite, would have to be trucks and everything down fifty and whatever, but the vast majority of it, if this was approved, could come from here rather than filling this idea and a vast majority of it coming from somewhere else in Lawrenceburg and having to be trucked down at fifty. So this is a option. And some may view that as a better option, but it's a different option. If this is more, that may lead to the city to take a look at it more that way. So that, so the area that would hold water, you know, before we were potentially holding water across this entire area, now it's definitely in here and probably only seasonally in here, just depending on how, how much water we get, how much rain we hit that year and all this. But everything's going to come out at a minimum at that four sixty one elevation. So everything you see that's either in this bluish color is all there to hold water. The rest of this would just be grasslands that has water running through it. Any questions related to that?
A couple of questions that I have. I went through the IDIM reports and there's been a couple of violations that have been reported by them. Do, if there's continued failures with like the leachate systems and stuff like that, that there's been failures with before, does that affect this still?
No, I mean, what specifically are you referring to?
Uh.
James, sir. I'm James Kleiner with Environmental Analytics Group. I'm the project manager for the site.
Uh, in twenty twenty four, there was an inspection done by IDIM and the leachate system reliability, there was no power to the control panel.
Yeah, the pumps were out of service during that inspection. The system was intact, but the pumps were sent offsite for service. That has been restored now. The pumps are back in service. So it wasn't an issue of there was a, you know, a break or anything in the lines, it's just the pumps were out of service when IDIM came to do their inspection.
You've got a history of violations on this property. You wouldn't deny that, would you?
Wouldn't deny that we've had violations in the past.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
How much, excuse me, the, where you've got the pond, how much probing have you guys done up toward the aqua flow of ours? How many holes have you guys put in that? So how, how would you know how close you're going to be?
There's at least one per acre down there, from what I understand, and that was at IDIM's direction as far as what they wanted testing.
How big a hole is it?
It's.
Two inch, Geopro.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so they bore down, they pull that sample and they look at that gravel strata. IDIM has their geotext look at it, so you've got, I mean, there's like twenty some holes down there and there's a big report which has been shared with Atlas as well as shared with you guys. So there's a consensus to a point as to, hey, where is the aquifer generally? And where are we at?
And how much clay is above it?
How much clay and like what type of soil and how thick is that layer? And so generally, I think Russ was speaking to this before, generally like a five foot layer of fairly impermeable clay is acceptable. In this case, because your wellhead area is nearby, they doubled that and said, no, let's be very certain, let's make that ten foot of this impermeable clay. And this elevation that we are proposing now puts at least an additional two foot beyond that. And in the areas where you've got more of this upland and this higher wetland area, it's five or six feet in addition to the ten foot that IDIM has asked for. So we're taking what IDIM is asking for and kind of reading what we're getting from the city as far as feedback and we're trying to just keep piling on that additional layer, hoping that in some way we're going to be able to utilize some of this dirt, but go above and beyond what IDIM has asked for to try to keep a layer that's thick enough to where the city can kind of see, okay, this is, you know, IDIM didn't just make a snap decision to approve this, it went through quite a bit of scrutiny. And we've had multiple conversations with Atlas and ATC as well.
Yeah, my big concern too is the pond that you've got, the ash pond.
Sure.
I mean, let's go down the road ten, twelve years, how are you going to make sure that there's no holes or anything happens? But I've seen where this stuff has leaked out and goes all over and then bottoms. And then you're going to have floods, which have floods every year.
Sure.
And then what's going to keep it from going down into the flow of water? Then it's going to go downstream. It may not hurt us here, but it's going to hurt Aurora and everybody on down through here. And they say there's some pretty bad stuff in this. It's got some bad chemicals in it. So that's another thing I'm worried about.
You have an open.
We have an open ash landfill right now.
Which is not capped, which is getting rained on, which is what this is for, to cap it. So you're, right now, while we wait to try to sort this out, and rightfully so, yeah, that uncapped ash can do lots of things. But it's also been like that since that ash was starting.
Well, I'm not talking about at the top, I'm talking down underneath. I'm talking about at the base of it.
So there's a liner underneath and then there's a clay dike that goes around the whole perimeter.
How are you guys going to keep the rodents and stuff out there? How are you going to make sure?
Once the.
Ten or twelve years.
Flash pond is closed, IDIM requires at least a thirty year post closure, which requires frequent inspections of the site, at least biannual, sometimes it's quarterly. So there's going to be routine inspections that'll be done after we gain approval of the closure from IDIM throughout the lifespan of post closure. So it'll be, there'll be eyes on it very frequently once it's closed. So if there.
Well, and look, I appreciate that, but I've also, through all of the IDIM reports, there's multiple things. For one, you guys have done none of the required annual reviews. Operators weren't certified. Two pumps that carry leachate from landfill to the main pond out of order. Lack of monitoring of stormwater outfalls, incorrect pH and chloride testing, and I could go on and on with the list.
Yeah, you're referencing the NPDS inspection from the.
You say there's going to be these reviews, but you guys are already supposed to be doing them and they've not been happening. We have to take into consideration what's going to happen to our constituents if this fails. And I think that's where our biggest concern is, is this is right on top of the aquifer. How do we tell our constituents that we're okay with there only being twelve foot of, twelve foot of clay on top of their drinking water?
So the concern from council is that the fly ash pond's going to fail, flood ash into this area that we're going to excavate and contaminate the drinking water? Is that what you're saying?
I would say so. I think that's one of the concerns.
And it's going to go down river. I mean, this stuff, we've done, all of us done a little research on this thing. And I mean, this is pretty hazardous. That's the reason it's not, nothing's being done over there because of this. And we got to worry about all of our people and the people below us. And it's going in the Ohio River. People go out there and fish, they go out there and swim, they do all kinds of stuff. And what's this going to do to them?
I just want to make sure we're understanding because this is not the landfill. This, there is no ash going in this.
This is where you're taking the clay to leave it on top of.
But the problems I'm hearing are, have to do with the landfill that's already there.
No, it's both.
No, it's both.
I know, but what I'm saying, but.
We understand what you're saying. And to be clear, we don't have an uncapped fly ash pond. You do. And we want you very much to cap it, and you haven't yet. And this is not a new issue. You did not just get this property to remediate. You've been paid for a long, long time to remediate this. So that's, we are not holding you up from doing your job.
I will tell you, my concern personally is that this land that protects our aquifer is going to be altered in some way, shape or form if we were to approve this. And the way that it sits right now is protecting the aquifer. We've had no issues over the last couple of years whatsoever. If you are to start moving dirt, how do we know for a hundred percent certainty that it's not going to disturb those aquifers? That's what my concern is.
Sure, sure. No, I mean, and all I can fall back on is IDIM's recommendation and the fact that their review of what would be acceptable was not taken lightly and that the amount of clay that is there is more than what IDIM's recommendation was. And IDIM understands the fact that it is close to. I am not a geotechnical engineer, but talking to IDIM's geotech and talking to Russ, who is, the time to get water through that permeable membrane into the aquifer was measured in hundreds of years.
For the five feet of clay, it was two, was two fifty around there and then double that, so you're like five, at least five hundred years.
And now we're talking an additional.
Two feet.
Two to five feet depending on where you're at. So what this is going to do is going to perform its task really after this landfill is capped. So you're not going to have open fly ash, you're going to have a landfill that's finally completed that has a clay cap or a soil cap over a membrane with a dike around it. The water that goes in there from the landfill ash area should be the same as what falls on your lawn. If all of that clay cap and everything stays the way it should be and is allowed to be completed. If it doesn't, even if this isn't there, whatever that is, is going to run downstream anyway. This isn't going to capture or augment or make worse. The only thing it's going to do is it's going to hold it in a specific area that is near your aquifer and that is your, that's your concern, which I understand.
I under, and I understand what you're saying. Either way, this is going to be capped. So whether we approve this or deny it, if we deny it, the alternative is you guys are going to truck the dirt in, correct?
Correct. The dirt, so we could be moving dirt tomorrow if we had another place to get it that didn't trap water because it's not council's, council doesn't.
Yeah.
Prove the non-water holding dirt moving.
So regardless, it's getting covered.
Yeah, and your problem is not this water, your problem is the ash. And that's what we're trying to cap. Doesn't mean we blow past this and get in a big hurry, but what I'm trying to make sure we're focused on is Lawrenceburg has had this ash pond, this ash landfill long before I was born. And some of you probably too, I mean, it's, it's been there forever. That's what we're trying to fix. This is trying to get fill in an area that doesn't put ten thousand trips of triaxle dump trucks down fifty and get it from an area that's not developable because of how deep it is in the floodplain. It's already got broken concrete and things that have been dumped on it, whatever. It's not pretty. This would realistically clean it up. The caveat there is, yes, it puts water nearer your aquifer, but it's twelve to fifteen feet from your aquifer with a pretty substantial layer that would keep that water from intermixing. And even if it did intermix, the water that's there should be coming off of a capped landfill that's also got everything encapsulated. So, yes, it's, I understand and feel for you. I sit on planning on that side and I have the same feeling of responsibility of I've got to make the right choice here. Yeah, is there a risk? I can't tell you there's zero risk. There's, there's very few things that have zero risk. I've heard people say, can you guarantee me one hundred percent no ash particulate, whatever, whatever? No, and I can't guarantee it's not already there now if we don't do this because that ash landfill has been there as long as it has.
The only way I say you can guarantee that is to take it out of there. That's what I was getting at the first time when we was.
To take, take, take the ash and haul it somewhere else?
Right.
That, that's, that's great, but that's not in any way, shape or form feasible.
But then that means we got to deal with the problem.
You were going to have to deal with that problem no matter what.
Yeah.
So.
I would have thought I and him would have dealt with that.
But in what way?
And when they put that out there, I mean, what if we, if I had, let's just say I had a business and I had contamination. I was doing something that I know that was contaminated.
Sure.
I would be responsible to get rid of it. So why wouldn't they be responsible to get rid of it instead of just leaving it there?
You end up making a bigger mess by disturbing it, for one. The landfill that it's sitting in was designed to contain fly ash. La roses, your hotels out there and some of these things, those are all actually sitting on fly ash that was trucked in and.
Different grade, a different grade.
They say it was clean, it was clean called.
Nothing like this here. This is a lot more dangerous than what they're filled with.
It's still fly ash.
But it's less dangerous fly ash.
Let me ask you guys a question too. I often wondered this. I know when Gibco was over there, they used this fly ash to, it made what, shingles out of it? And went on and sold it in people, went on people's houses. And they also took and used it for sandblasting and went right down in the Ohio River.
Yep.
So, I mean, how was it not, not so bad then, but it is so bad now?
That's a good question.
What's the difference?
I don't think they knew as much about it then as they do now.
Hell, I mean, we've got, it's an issue that.
I think.
We're over here with.
I think you've seen less tolerance of coal as a fuel source to put electric in your house. And as a result of that, that's a, that's a, a black eye that someone that doesn't like coal as a fuel source can, can point to. Because it, the fly ash you make today isn't that much different than the fly ash they made fifty years ago. It's, it's the, you're burning the same coal in a similar furnace, it's about the same stuff. They do some things to clean up the emissions, but it's still got mercury and arsenic and lead and it's, it's the same stuff. It's just everyone all of a sudden, in the last fifteen years, has gotten a lot more excited about it.
So we will, thank you gentlemen very much. So, and then just to wrap up this conversation too then, one, yes, I did receive an email just to me on Thursday, fourth to five PM, Russ Benperry. We would like to discuss whether the city would be interested in acquiring the property after the soil borrow effort is complete. This would be structured as a donation where the potential reuse for the city could include dredge spoil, or dredge, sorry, dredge spoil management, wildlife, trail park, et cetera. And then also speaking to Russ today before the meeting, he indicated that there would be an alternate plan of some sort like this. My response to him was, you know, we, we just have your permit application.
Sure.
From June to consider with the attachments. I don't know that we can really consider a new plan this late in the game, but we appreciate you guys being here today. And I'll say that I did have a chance to meet with Atlas today. So just kind of recapping this entire process. Tanner's Creek ELT came to the city and applied for an excavation permit to borrow the soil from this area, which would then result in the ponding area. We've had many meetings. We've offered these folks many opportunities to come in and have meetings with us, public meetings, present materials, present arguments, present pros and cons. Been able to question them. I feel like we've given them a really robust due process through this consideration period. We also took the additional step to protect our city and protect our environment by engaging Atlas, ATC. So that's a third party professional environmental consulting firm. They've been with us every step of the way. Their opinion today, and, and just so we're, everything's in the record, and we're going to ask for a vote on this permit in a few minutes. But their overall opinion is that Tanner's Creek ELT cannot guarantee that the aquifer will be safe from contamination. They have some issues with Tanner's Creek ELT's responses to IDIM questions. Yes, IDIM did generally approve their paperwork, but IDIM, in Atlas's opinion and review, is not necessarily looking at the long-term excavation plan and monitoring plan. The overall scope of the work and in Atlas's opinion, that's not sufficient here. There were the excavation plan. There were, the excavation plan does not have any plan for the wetlands or the archaeological features there. So this is a known archaeological site and there's no plan to deal with what happened to the fan counter, Native American Barrow Ground or Bones or Arrowheads or things of that nature that hasn't been dealt with at all. There's no monitoring of excavation elevation. So yes, these guys have submitted plans and grading with, as they said, they're boring every acre, but that, in Atlas's opinion, is not sufficient and that is borne out by the documentation that we received in Atlas's review and documents, you can see them for yourself, the documents that were presented as part of this application permit show a great variation in the distance of the aquifer. It's not uniform across the entire proposed dig site or fill site. And so that variation is very concerning to our third-party experts, just in the fact that they're concerned that there's not uniform distance, there wouldn't be a uniform distance between the clay and the aquifer. The, they do not believe that the SWP three plan for erosion and sediment control is sufficient. There is no thirty water groundwater, groundwater monitoring plan for this, what would end up being a pond or lake specifically. So those are, oh, and they also recommended there'd be wells specifically designed for this standing water area to protect the aquifer. So those are the findings and opinions of Atlas as of today, as of this afternoon, actually, when I spoke to them. So I'm gonna inject that into the record. Obviously, all of your questions are in the record in the presentation today. So I think now there's only one thing left to do, which is just a vote on approving or denying the permit.
I'll make a motion to deny the application.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to deny by Dylan for the Tanish Creek permit and a second by Brett. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Pass unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
Okay, moving on to comments from the audience. Please step forward and state your name.
Who's that?
Who's this white-haired guy?
What's that? What'd you say?
I said, who's this white-haired guy?
Oh, yeah. Ah, me and Kim were talking last night and I gotta get through this. But anyway, we were talking, this is the last council meeting, as me being the sworn fire chief. So I'm gonna read this because I'll probably fumble all the way through it, just bear with me. "I just wanted to express my appreciation to the city of Lawrenceburg, current and past administrations, its citizens, the people of Durbin County and the great state Indiana allowing me to lead the best fire department in the state. I just realized this weekend with random citizens speaking with me is the people actually play close attention to your department and what your department is doing and the impact that you do have on the citizens every single day. These conversations have been quite humbling for me. My tenure as fire chief here has been a roller coaster ride, exciting, adventurous, sometimes painful and jarring. From working as a volunteer, becoming a career, from working as a volunteer to becoming a career department, I can proudly say I was a part of it all. I have seen many firsts for this department. The first May Day called for myself and two others, not my proudest moment. The second and proudest is being named the first full-time fire chief. Just now, just now, the thirty-nine years of working for the fire department and fifteen years where I'm top of the organization, I was able to etch my name in a department's history as one of four fire chiefs with twelve years or more as the fire chief. Those are Pete Andrus, Huck Warburton, Randy Avner and myself. Noting, I would never be able to accomplish this task without Kim supporting me every step of the way. I have taken as far as I can, the foundation is set, the organization can only grow. Thank you all."
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Jermaine.
And Jim Fauch, I want to say I've known him since he was this big and his mom and dad would be proud.
Well, I'd just like to say, I've, I've been with him for quite a few years, watching him be the fireman and the fire chief. And as you said, we're the number one fire department, but that's a lot because of you, buddy.
That's right.
You've done a hefty job.
I'll speak on behalf of the police department during your tenure chief. We've had a very good relationship. Public safety is the top in the state. I'm not just saying that. I'm very impressed with the way you ran the department and transparency you kept as law enforcement the whole time you did it. I know we rise each other back and forth field fireman, police thing, and if we didn't, I'd think something was truly wrong. But none of that was ever taken personal and I'm gonna miss that. I hope that carries on.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments from the audience? Nothing? Nothing?
This is two times in a row now.
She's slacking.
Yeah. I might be slacking.
She got a sore throat?
No, I will say that I verified the pavilion the other day and it looks like it's about ready.
It is, it's almost ready. We'll be opening the skating rink. I'm not sure what date, but it'll be on time. Anybody know the date?
They set the chiller today.
I thought it was November twelfth.
They set the chiller today.
Oh, did they set the chiller today?
End of November.
We're not jinxing it. They're not in there putting the skip, the ice yet, so once they do that, we'll announce it really soon.
Oh, did anyone notice the sign at the Liberty too?
Yeah, nice.
Isn't that really nice? That is awesome.
Yeah, I saw it there in the daylight.
There was a lot of people here Friday night, so it was really nice.
They could have had some neon on that sign though. I like the neon. All right.
Sometimes this will need to be...
No, I think we're ready to.
All right. Other comments from the audience? Review, motion for review and discussion of claims for board approval. Motion approval, payroll, reports and checks once properly certified.
What happened to claims?
Yeah, you need a motion.
You need, you want a motion?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Claims first, brother.
I need a motion.
Hey, wait a second. I'll make a motion.
Reversion and discussion of claims, it doesn't say, for board approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Brett, second by...
Second.
Lenny. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd also like to get a motion to play...
You're out of luck.
Too late.
A claim to grassroots canine dog training LLC for $15,000 for the dog, so I can issue that check and it would be funded out of the K nine line and the Randy Day line, if I get a motion for that.
Do I have a motion to fund the 15,000 canine?
So moved.
Motion by Lenny, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Tommy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you.
All right, motion approval, payroll, reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Brett? Motion?
Second.
Second.
Second by Dylan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
I know that's what he was waiting on. I know, I really wanted to do that other way.
Harlem, don't let off.